The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Plainville Town Council regular meeting. Today is Monday, October 3rd, 2022. If you will please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Rocco will lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any presentations tonight, so we're going to go right into the public hearing. I'll ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearings at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 3rd, 2022, in the council chambers of the municipal center in Plainville to hear public comments regarding use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the following projects: Plainville High School boiler replacement, estimated cost $698,000; fire department windows replaced, estimated cost $130,000; and sidewalk installation project requesting an additional $190,000, original appropriation of $410,000, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 29th day of September, 2022.
Thank you very much. So I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing notice, please come to the mic over here, state your name and address. I don't see any residents here tonight, although thanks to those who did come. I'll just ask again, does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? One more time, anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? All right. I will close the public hearing. Moving on.
Just ma'am chair, can I just, on our paper copy, under firehouse window replacement, it says $84,500, but on the online copy, it says $130. I just, for clarification, is it the $130?
Good question.
Sorry, let me get my mic on. I think that was the estimate, was the $130,000 that came through the permit project planning committee meeting estimate, and the quote came in lower than that. And that's going to be one of those items that helped us.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, minutes of the previous meeting, may I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes from September 19th, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements to make?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rosemary.
Yes, I attended the September meetings of the Housing Authority and the Library Board of Trustees. At the Housing Authority meeting, their main topics were discussing vacancies, the turnover and in the process of appearing a unit for a new tenant. And at Library Board of Trustees, they reviewed the summer data, fall programming, at that point, it was the upcoming book sale, that's run by the Friends of the Library, of course, and also introduced their new mobile app, which is now up and running on the library website. Really, just a couple of minutes, you can set it up, you can do all kinds of things, you can search a catalog, put a book on hold, and it's a great, it's a great app to use. And hopefully, a lot of people will make use of it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report? Moving along, appointments and resignations. We need to add an appointment tonight.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to add an officer appointment tonight. I don't have the information yet.
I can help, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
The appointment would be for Officer Al Aballo, and I believe it's A-B-A-L-L-O, as a newest officer for the Plainville.
Beginning tomorrow.
Starting, yeah, starting.
10/4/2022.
2022.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll put that as number, item number three. Item number one, Capital Projects Building Committee resignations, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Mark Bellinger from the Capital Projects Building Committee, effective October 3rd, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Steve Martino from the Capital Projects Building Committee, effective October 10th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. In regard to discussion, if we could, please send a letter of thanks to both of these gentlemen. They have been almost charter members of the committee since the inception of when we put this together. They've, they've worked very hard on a number of large projects, most recently was the Wheeler School Building Project. So if we could send them each a letter of thanks, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any other appointments? Are we appointments to boards and commissions tonight? Okay, all right. Number three.
I'm sorry, what was the name again?
Yeah, it would be Al Aballo.
Aballo.
And I can give you a little bit, just a brief background, that Officer Aballo is, has four years of service with the West Haven, Connecticut Police Department, and has a BS in criminal justice. And I will say that I was afforded the opportunity to interview Officer Aballo, and think that this is going to be a fine addition to this department. I think he's got a great record there in West Haven, seen a lot, can transfer here to this department. He just appears to me to be the right fit at the right time, and I think the chief is pleased, I know I'm pleased, and I think he'll do a great job for us.
Okay, great.
And my apologies to the council and to the chief for that oversight.
I wondered why they were all here, but.
Well, the cruisers are.
It's always nice to see everybody. That's.
Someone's in trouble. Thank you for letting us finish our meeting first.
Motion to appoint Officer Al Aballo to the Plainville Police Department, effective October 4th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion, a motion and a second. Any further comment? Welcome to the Plainville Police Department. Certainly, our police department is a very, very important part of Plainville, and we certainly appreciate you stepping up to a job that's difficult, I'm sure rewarding at times, and you're joining a very wonderful group of people, so congratulations to you. Thank you. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
I want to thank you guys. I'm gonna try to work as hard as I can here, and I'll let you guys down in the speech matters as to this police department, so thank you guys for the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're set. Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. All right, Board of Ed, it's not until our next meeting, report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us tonight?
Good evening. I do not have anything for tonight.
Okay, good to see you. All right, on to the next item, the report of the town manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items, beginning with the Honor Heights Sewer Project discussion. On this project, talking with the engineer recommending the council consider the process for seeking professional services to look at deviating a little bit from the normal standard process for soliciting design bids. He's recommending that we authorize, if there is consensus and no objection, to move forward with two consultants to provide the design proposals, essentially shortlisting two that we've already worked with, Tig and Bond and LEA. There are two professional engineering firms most familiar with the town's sanitary sewer system, and I think it makes sense, I agree with the engineer in this case, certainly we want firms that are familiar, and I think going out would just delay the process in getting a third one, that would, these two would certainly be shortlisted right out of the gate. So I think in the interest of time, we're indicating that this process could expedite the selection process, where we could go review internally and have a recommendation for consideration at the next meeting on October 17th, versus going out through a process to gather maybe one, maybe, maybe we will or will not get a response to that, and it would just delay the project. Based on, on projections of looking at expectations of beginning this construction project in April of 2023, should the council be engaged in this project, and to my knowledge, that has been supported, but we'll see what, what the engineering firm brings us with respect to design documents and project costs. So this would, would be the first step in that process, and I think the, I support the recommendation, I think it would be the right thing to do, especially given the fact that we are shorthanded in the engineering firm, in the engineering department, and would not be able to do this in-house, and that's the reason for going outside. And I think these two firms are obviously no stranger to the town, to the council, maybe to me, but very good reputations, and either one would be fine, so certainly would be shortlisted, and I think that's a smart recommendation in order to move the project timeline along, or to keep that timeline, that project timeline.
Okay.
That's where we are with Honor Heights. Item two, Police Department Cruisers. Two, two police cruisers were approved under the Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, for fiscal year 2023. The town will be purchasing two, 2022 Ford Intercept Utility Vehicles for frontline patrol use. The vehicles will be purchased off of state contract from Genghis Ford for $34,664 each. There's also a separate line item of $30,000 to cover the outfitting of the two vehicles, roughly $15,000 each, and there's an item under New Business for the Town Council to award the vehicles under the state bid number 019-0161. That appears later on in the agenda. Item three, Sewer User Fees. Under the town charter, the town council also serves as a water pollution control authority or agency for Plainville. As such, the town council sets the sewer user rate each October for bills that will be due on November 1st. The goal is to maintain a fund balance equal to three months' worth of sewer operating budget, which is currently the case, I'm happy to report, and the sewer user rate did not increase last year, and the recommendation is to remain at the same rate with no increase for this year as well. So a public hearing must be held before the town council can decide on any proposed change to the sewer user rate, and there is an item under New Business that would set the public hearing date for the next town council meeting on October 17th.
I think this is the third consecutive year that we've had no increase in our sewer user fees. Is that, is it three years that you can recall, everybody?
At least, I think, yeah, at least.
I think it's year number three that we haven't had to do that, so it's, it's a nice trend.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's very good news, I'm happy to report that, and.
Happy to hear it.
Yeah, yeah, but of course, the work that Robert and Rob Buden have done on, on looking and crunching those numbers, so hats off to the staff there, and, you know, it's, like you said, it's a great opportunity to, to just say that the trend is our friend, that's, that's a good thing, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and next item is, number four is the White Oak Redevelopment Project Update, and I have a few things to get through here. The town council at the previous meeting approved the resolution for the Financial Assistance Proposal, the FAP. The FAP will provide a state grant of $1,170,000 for the remediation, abatement, and partial demolition of the former White Oak Corporation Office Center at 1 and 63 West Main Street. This property has been vacant since 2003. Manafort Newport has finished cleaning out the debris within the White Oak Building, which is another important aspect of moving this project along. This project requires a Section 824 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission before the acquisition of property, and the P&amp;Z acted favorably on Tuesday night, the 27th, and voted the proposed purchases in harmony with the town's plan of conservation and development. The town has also applied and been accepted into the abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program, the ABC Program. This program offers municipalities and developers who are not responsible for contamination to be afforded liability relief from the responsibility to investigate and remediate off-site contamination, provided that the project meets certain economic development thresholds and remediation is completed under a formal DEEP program. Manafort Newport will also be applying to this program. And currently, Tig and Bond, the town's consultant for remediation oversight, is completing pre-remediation work, including updates to the Phase 1 environmental site assessment report and the Environmental Condition Assessment Form, or the ECAP, application. A title search is underway through Attorney Mastriani, who has secured the services of Attorney Bill Galski, to complete the search on the two parcels, and I think might, might have a few comments to make in terms of the update with the title search.
Yes, if I can make a quick comment about that and an update.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Sorry. So title search was completed, and we uncovered about 10 to 12 title issues that are going to have to be resolved before we move forward with this purchase. The attorneys are working to resolve that, together with Connecticut Attorneys Title Insurance Corporation, which is, that's a title insurance company, it's going to write the policy for the property, and, and when we close. The vast majority of the issues, I think, are very minor. The most significant is, is titled to an area of the property in the back, in the north part of the, the property on 63 West Main Street. And as of today, I just heard that it looks like we have a path to resolving that fairly easily, and that was very good news today. I've also received the Financial Assistant Program grant documents, and my office is currently putting together an array of documents that the state requires us to prepare, sign, and execute, and provide at the closing. The thought is, the closing on the grant obviously will occur after we take title to the property, and it's anticipated that we take title to the property probably within 30 days. So that's pretty exciting.
Okay, great, thank you.
That is all I have, except I'll ask Cindy to read the happenings.
Thank you. So first, we'll start with the Senior Center. Senior Center will be hosting a COVID clinic, or actually, two, I'm sorry, that will be open to the public, Monday, October 17th, and Monday, October 24th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Griffin Health will be conducting a COVID vaccine booster shot clinic at the Senior Center, ages six months and up. Moderna and Pfizer will be available. They'll be able to administer shots for your first, second vaccines, along with all boosters. Please bring your photo ID, your insurance card, and your COVID vaccine card. Walk-ins are welcome. Meet and greet the new town manager, Michael Paulus, open to the public Thursday, October 20th, 9:30 AM. This will be a wonderful opportunity to meet Plainville's new town manager, Michael Paulus, and talk about the great town of Plainville while enjoying a wonderful continental breakfast. Please register by Wednesday, October 19th. AARP Smart Driver Course, again, open to the public Thursday, October 27th, 12:30 to 4:30 PM. The cost is $20 for AARP members and $25 for non-AARP members. Sign-up has already begun, so please contact if interested. Holiday Craft Fair, open to the public on Saturday, November 5th, from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM. Free admission, crafts, vendors, raffles, bake sale, Grandma's Cookie House cookies, lunch, they're currently accepting vendor applications. Please contact Rhonda at the Senior Center for more information. The Senior Center is happy to announce their, I hope I say this right, Senior Center La Petite Cafe is now open on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 11:30 to 1:00. Enjoy a new special every week in addition to a regular menu, which will feature their famous grilled cheeses, their famous BLTs, center salad, and delicious homemade soups. Our own Marge Burris, chairperson of the Plainville Conservation Commission, appeared on Great Day at Nine with Scott Haney on September 27th. Great Day at Nine is a WFSB televised media spot that highlights human interest stories. Marge represented the town of Plainville wonderfully, as she described the upcoming Pecquabic River Cleanup Event they sponsor and organize each year. Plainville's Conservation Commission is full of caring volunteers that truly set a standard for community volunteerism. Marge is a great example of that spirit. She's a tireless advocate for the commission and devotes much of her time ensuring their efforts have a positive impact in the town of Plainville. If interested in viewing Marge's segment and watch Marge being interviewed by TV celebs regarding Plainville's Conservation Commission, go to https://www.wfsb.com/live-stream, scroll down to Videos on Demand and click on Great Day at Nine. Marge's segment starts at 13, 10 minutes into the segment, if you want to scroll ahead. Great job, Marge, and thank you. And last, the town clerk's office would like to remind everyone, absentee ballots will be mailed out this Friday, October 7th. Residents in need of voting by absentee ballot can contact the town clerk's office at 860-793-0221, extension 71553, or go to the town website for additional information. That's it.
That was a long one, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Can we introduce our new assistant town manager tonight?
Absolutely.
For our viewers out in TV land.
Yeah, and maybe first, I could thank Cindy for, for reading the happenings, and, and as part of the introduction of our new assistant town manager, he will be taking over those responsibilities. So I'd like to introduce Andy Cerioli, our new assistant town manager, and want to welcome here, Andy here, to the town of Plainville. I'm very happy to have him in, in that position. He comes with great experience out of the South Central Regional Council of Governments, a lot of, 15 towns in that council of governments, he's had a really good exposure to a number of different communities in which he's worked with, and I'm pleased and happy to have him here. So without any further ado, our new assistant town manager, Andy.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I just want to say that I'm honored to be in this position as the assistant town manager, and I'm grateful to Mike and the entire staff for the support that they've shown me since I started. It's been an incredible, this is my third day, I think, but it's been, it's been great, and I look forward to getting to know each member of the Plainville community, and doing my part in delivering high-quality services to, to each of the residents, so I'm always here if you all need anything, and thanks for letting me be here. Appreciate the opportunity.
Hey, welcome. Officially welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mike or Cindy with their reports tonight? Good job, everybody. Okay. Moving on to public comments, this is the segment of our meeting where we welcome the public to come to the podium, please state your name and address, you'll be given three minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Anybody wish to speak? Gail? Can you turn that on? There's a little button. There you go.
Okay, I'm just curious, I know we have a new manager, but I'm curious if Mr. Lee got flooded away, or if anyone heard from him since the, what do you call it, hurricane happened? Did he, because he moved down to Florida, right?
He did not get flooded.
No.
Lost power, but that was about it.
Okay, I actually spoke to a woman today, and she said, that, I was calling her regarding business, and she said that they had 11 days of rain before the hurricane hit, so they had a lot of water before, so I was thinking of him, and then they were interviewing other people from Connecticut, so, and I told them to send a postcard, but I guess he hasn't had time. Okay, that's, that's, oh, one question. When the buildings over there, do they clean out for asbestos?
I, I don't know the level of detail with, with respect to the remediation. I suspect that there is a portion of asbestos, I don't know how much, and maybe potentially even lead. Lead and asbestos are typically found in buildings of that age. I just haven't read the report yet.
Okay, I was just curious. I spent 25 years at a law firm that dealt with asbestos, that's why I think about it a lot, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Gail, you're, you are the only member of the public here tonight that's, to contribute, so thank you for that, and with that, I will close public comments and move on to the next item of business. We do not have any old business, so I will ask for a motion for new business, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Relief Plan Act for sidewalk improvement for an additional amount of $190,000, and amend the award of sidewalk construction bid number 2022-16E, the DNP, Marass Construction Ledlow, Massachusetts, from $332,350 to an amount not to exceed $600,000. B, high school boiler in the amount of $698,000, and C, firehouse window replacement in the amount of $84,500.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any one of those items in that first motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2023-1, design-build high school boiler project to McKinney Mechanical, Newtown, Connecticut, in the amount of $698,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to waive the bid process and award bid number 2023-07, firehouse window replacement to the window shop, Plainville, Connecticut, in the amount of $84,500.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We've already had some discussion on this. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2023-06, Plainville, I'm sorry, Police Department Cruiser under state contract number 419, PSX 0161 to Genghis Ford, Plainville, Connecticut, in the amount of $69,328.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion for the town council acting as water pollution control authority to establish a public hearing on Monday, October 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, in the municipal center to hear public comments regarding the sewer user rate for the period November 1st, 2022, to October 31st, 2023.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great job. That's it. All right, that takes care of our new business. Any other items of discussion for, for this evening, Michael? Have anything that may not have been on the agenda? You want to share? If not, that's fine, too.
Yeah, nothing that, I mean, there's, there's a whole lot of, but I think you've covered in terms of, of, you know, projects, the, we're looking and monitoring the Main Street paving, right? That seems to be kind of congested and, and really kind of messing up traffic patterns, but hoping that we can, you know, get that through, and John's been, John is here tonight and is working on that, so. And John, John's been, John is here tonight and, and is working on that, so John and I will certainly be monitoring that, and to whatever extent you can push the state to get it done, but every indication is it'll get done before the Oktoberfest, I have a meeting for the, I'm sorry, Pumpkin Fest in October, October 22nd, and that will have a internal meeting in terms of planning and coordination tomorrow. So that is, preparations are moving to get the road done, to make sure that we're all set for the Pumpkin Fest, and I'm looking forward to it, it'll be my first, and very excited about that, it'll be Andy's first, and, yeah, I think that's great.
Okay.
It's moving along.
Getting there, okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Are we closed? Okay. Then, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.